It is Monday, December 13th, 2021. It is 6:03 PM and we are in the boardroom of the Harlan Community High School for the Board of Education Regular Meeting. The first item on the agenda is to call the meeting to order and determine a forum. We do have a forum. Next item on the agenda is public forum, and I can't believe that anybody requested to speak, so no public forum tonight. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Some of it.
What was it, Joe? Monty and then Joe?
Seven.
Thank you. First by Monty, second by Joe. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item on the agenda is the discussion items. The first is the Administrator Report. Okay. We have student accolades, which I think I will show. I'm gonna let Mr. Frolic talk, and then I'll talk about the student accolades here. Do you want to start with your FFA?
I want to start with the football team. There's food down there waiting. I don't hold up. I promise that we would get in the top of the agenda before. So first of all, I'd like to introduce the captains of the 2021 State Championship 3A Football Team. Alex Munson and Will McGoughlin. And then we have Jamison Beaker and Joey Mosher would be the other two that are the captains. But this time, I'd just like to turn it over to the captains and just talk a little bit about your experience or answer questions, kind of informal.
Yeah, so I don't know how much of an effect you guys have on Friday nights, but like everything on the field that we see runs smoothly, like guys doing the chains, the refs, most of the refs, I guess. Yeah, I don't know. The support from the community, it's just awesome and very grateful to go to this school. It's pretty special.
I'd like to thank the coaches in the school district, and just winning the state championship and going to the dome is quite the experience.
Guys kind of awesome. Yes. Should be the congratulations.
And I want to thank you guys for getting the school year started off, because when you have a football team like that, it makes the school year go much better. So thank you. You got us off to a good start, so yeah, go enjoy your viewing.
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll go into the FFA National Convention. I'll introduce Chris Holloway and Mr. White, and I'll let you just introduce your crew there.
Of course, I had to fall asleep. Okay. Okay, well, we're here to present about the National FFA Convention. We went on the convention the last week of October. It's held in Indianapolis, Indiana, and it has been there for the last several years and will be for the next several years. We did not get to go to National Convention last year. They actually had a virtual convention, so this year was like, it was just fun to actually get to go back and be in person and experience that again. We started this a few years ago. We started traveling with other area schools on a charter bus. So the other schools we traveled with were Audubon, Exhira, EHK, Riverside, and Boyer Valley. And so there was about 45 people or so on our bus total. And the nine students from our school that went are in the picture here. Jocelyn Minna, Aneah Castor, I'm gonna skip a few, Olivia Gens, and Cameron Springman, and then Mr. White and I. And then I'm gonna let them introduce themselves, and then we're just gonna go in and tell you what we did at the convention, so.
I'm Mike Roberts, and I'm a sophomore.
I'm Joseph Bragg, and I'm a sophomore.
I'm Riley Obrak, I'm a junior, and I'm serving as a Harlan FFA treasurer.
I'm Stephanie Shering, I'm a junior, and I'm the Harlan FFA co-reporter.
I'm Taya Frolic, and I'm a sophomore.
First stop is when we were heading down there, we stopped in Millingburg, Iowa, at the Kinsey Manufacturing. They gave us a tour of the building, the facility, what they do there, told us all about it. We went to the factory, showed us what they were doing, and then towards the end, stuff that they were building planners at the beginning, and you got to see the whole planner and all put together.
After the tour, we went, we went and watched a short video on like the history of Kinsey, how it started as a small like welding and repair shop, and then a farmer wanted a grain cart, and that's really how Kinsey exploded into a massive company like it is now.
Our next tour was in Indiana. It was the Umburger Show Feeds Tour, and they're one of the largest feed distributors in North America. Something unique about them is they only do show feeds, and they actually got a new state-of-the-art facility, which is pretty cool, because I got to see their old one, so like it was a bit major upgrade. And another unique thing about them is they have robot arms. They actually have two of them, and what they do is they take those bags and they stack them on pallets, so they don't have to use manual labor for that. And then it was just really fun and a good learning experience.
So next, we got to go to Beasley's Orchard, and there they grew a whole bunch of apples, strawberries, pumpkins, and it's all open for the public to go in and buy stuff. And then we got to hear from the owner of the orchard, and he just told us about how the orchard is adapting to new agriculture techniques and what they're doing to make the orchard more efficient.
To start up the convention, we went to the opening session where all the chapters attended, so there's actually multiple open sessions. And the keynote speaker was Courtney Dehoff, known as Fancy Lady Cowgirl, and she just talked about how to be yourself and being authentic is good, and her journey's for agriculture, and you don't only have to be a farmer to be an FFA.
After that, we went to the World's Toughest Rodeo. There's two entertainment opportunities that the National FFA provides us. The other one would be the concert. Our students felt that the World's Toughest Rodeo was gonna be the best fit for them. They really enjoyed it. Just a nice night where we can relax, because we do a pretty demanding schedule when we are out there up early and late nights and everything else, and also provides that experience that some kids don't always get, so either go into a concert or the rodeo.
So next, we got to go to the career show and expo, and we got to spend the whole morning walking around, and there's over 250 different exhibitors there, and there were like ag companies and truck manufacturers and colleges, and they all gave out, you know, some like free stuff. We got a whole bunch of t-shirts and stuff. It was fun to walk around and learn. And then we also got to choose which leadership workshop we got to go to. So there's a whole bunch you could choose from, and you just got to go in there and learn and meet other people.
We went to the Indianapolis Motor Speedway, where they took us on a little bus trip around the Speedway, and we got to learn about all the traditions, like kissing the bricks. And then we went into the like historic museum they have there, and we got to saw lots of the cars and everything that has raced there, so that was really cool.
Only the champions get to kiss the bricks, so we always kiss the bricks when we go.
As a fun activity, we went to a haunted escape room. We got to mingle with other people on our charter bus, and it helped us learn some leadership skills and communication skills as we tried to escape from the rooms.
Did you escape?
Yes, we did.
And it was interesting. It was fun. It was interesting. And then the last place we went on our way home, this is actually up like just south of Chicago in Illinois. We stopped at the Far Oaks Sparms. The first tour we took was through the dairy facility, and I was trying to find the number, thousands ahead of cattle at this facility. They're one of the top in the nation, state of the art. They have these new barns now where these cows are just in this barn, and there's only just like a few milking stations, and they're microchipped, and they go through the milking parlor as many times as they want per day, depending on age and all their production levels and things. So that was pretty cool to see, like, you know, new state-of-the-art technology. And then we also got to see their pig barns as well, so that was interesting to see that too. They have lots of, they specialize in educating the public in a lot of those things, so it was a cool tour to be able to experience that. And then I did forget at the beginning, the last one thing, there's almost 70,000 people that attend this convention. They're from all 50 states, even like Puerto Rico, the Virgin Islands, so anywhere where there's FFA chapters. So they got to meet people from literally all over the country. You know, those workshops, the career show, all that is just a sea of blue coats, and as Taya said, there's multiple opening sessions just to fit everybody in Lucas Oil Stadium, so it's quite the experience, and we're just glad we get the opportunity to go each year, and we thank you for your support. But if you have any questions, they can answer any.
What was your, oh, go ahead.
What was your favorite part?
Everyone have a different favorite part?
I'd say it was meeting all the people. You get to learn about a lot of like different states and just have fun with everyone.
The Lucas Oil Stadium, that was pretty cool.
That was cool.
I like the Umburger Show Feed Tours, because I actually used that feed at my home, so it was really interesting to learn where that came from.
I like going to the rodeo. It was a fun night off and just to, it was fun.
I also liked the rodeo, watching the bull riders perform was very cool.
I wonder why you like them?
Is this the first time?
This was the first time.
Second time for me.
Yeah, we had a couple kids that have already went, and some of them never went before, so we do an application process. We're kind of hoping that like next year, now that kids actually saw other kids go and stuff, they'll know, you know, the-
More about it.
Yeah, more about the trip, because it was weird with a year off. Some kids were a little hesitant to apply and go, but I think the word will get out now that it's fun, so.
I highly recommend people go.
Did you take board members?
I guess they're gonna chaperone these guys, so that'd be part of me.
Well, even if students do go twice, opening sessions, everything else, they change speakers. We changed our locations for tours and everything else every year, so still provides kids opportunities even if they have gone before.
And have you gone before?
Oh, yeah.
So is it true the president and or vice president and or the owner of Kinsey Manufacturing has their own personal helicopter and has it stored underneath their house?
I don't know.
I wouldn't know.
I know he stands on though with his company, I mean, he even farms himself, so that's just really cool to see.
It's amazing where he started from.
His museum's pretty cool, too.
What?
His museum had a dual John Deere diesel.
Oh, yeah. Got lots of cool stuff to see.
Well, it seems like everyone enjoyed themselves a lot.
Thank you for sharing.
You always, the kids always do such a fantastic job presenting.
Yes, yeah, they did.
And that's a credit.
Oh, I don't know.
They're kind of prepared and-
Be careful.
Yeah, well, they're just naturally good speakers in general, so that helps me out a lot. Okay, well, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. Quick here, student accolades. Mr. Mosher is at the football banquet, because his son's a senior, so it started at the same time. We thought it was gonna be a little later, but it didn't quite work out that way. So he has student, citizen of the week, Colton Jensen, that he wanted to show. And Mr. Mueller is at the middle school. No, we're not. There he is. All right. You can talk. Go ahead, Mr. Mueller.
Yeah, I got the ballgame down there to supervise, but we have 10 middle school students that qualified for Southwest Iowa Honor Band, so that was great, and there was even a student in there that qualified that is not on their primary horn, but was kind of on their secondary horn, so that was quite an accomplishment as well. So a great job to them, as well as Mr. Paulson, our new middle school band director, doing a great job. Then the next slide, we have our trial team. We have an eighth grade team and a seventh grade team. Our eighth grade team qualified for state, and our seventh grade team finished fourth, so they took three out of each regional, and so we almost had a double qualifier there, but if they would've taken one more, our seventh grade team would've qualified also. So there's our eighth grade team of 10. Angel Stern, she got an award for being outstanding witness, and there's Mrs. Wrinkly, the sponsor, and then we had a couple high school kids that were assisting and helping out as well. And then, the next one is, one of the big projects that Mrs. Blair does, our sixth grade communications or English teacher does, is an informational writing piece, and it's always on dogs, and so they get to select to write about a dog, and then we ended up having, I think it was 21 total dogs over the course of about a week and a half to demonstrate. So that's always a fun time, and we have lucked out so far that all of them have done their business outside.
I was gonna say, over the years.
Yes, and it's fun to watch them. The kids get really excited, not only the kids that are bringing their dogs, but the other kids, and then some of the dogs, I think, would love to stay and be petted all day long, so it's a win-win for everybody.
Mr. Frolic? Thank you.
Fall play, it was in two weekends. We had, I believe it was all together. That was a musical, the one weekend before the, and then there was one, that was a comedy, there was two comedies, and that's the comedy night there. And then this is the FFA team that just presented, and then you got your football's captains, and then there's Jackson Rold there, and it was a special night that he was part of the coin toss.
Was a great experience for him, I'm sure.
Yeah. He's, he's a huge Harlan cyclone, though it doesn't matter what sport it is, but it's a cyclone, he's a fan.
I just want to add that there were two plays the night of the comedy, and the other one was the Brothers Grimm Spectaculathon. So it was, and then there was one, and it was two back-to-back, and a lot of kids in that Brothers Grimm, so they all did a magnificent job.
And now we have Green Hills AEA, so Lolly Ha and Steve Serban.
Hi, everybody. Good to see some of you again. We are here, we're going on tour, Green Hills AEA, across the next three years to visit all of our school boards and make sure that all of you know what we do and have appreciation, we hope, for what we add to your district. And I hope Dr. Barnett agrees with that, and it feels like we're a good support, and she better, knowing where she came from. So we just have a couple of slides that I'll hand out that kind of matches up, but we don't know if school boards always, and the community always understands that, you know, you pay taxes that go to the Green Hills AEA. They actually are collected by Harlan School Districts, and then they're sent to us, and then we use that to hire people to send back to all of you and work in our schools. So as an agency, that's the math of us, all of Southwest Iowa. We have 303 people, we have eight offices, we have 37,000 students that we serve, 3,000 teachers. All the teachers in your schools get different kinds of support from us, and people always say, when we talk about Green Hills, that we're the size of New Jersey, so that is a lot of area to cover, and a lot of children out there, and a lot of teachers out there that we are committed every day to serving, supporting, and advocating for in all the ways that we can. So we have, we have tiers of leadership, so we have one whole section of our agency that is what we call Universal Services, and those are the services we provide for all kids, not just special education kids, but all kids and all teachers. And you can see that under, on the left over there, we help teachers with assessments and collecting data and looking at their data and understanding what that data means and what kind of planning they can do. We have literacy consultants, we have some of the best experts in how to teach reading and how to help elementary, middle school, and high school children who are struggling with reading, or to help a whole school system figure out the best curriculum to use, that sort of thing. Same thing for math. We have a whole department that does nothing but think about what do teachers need and want and want to get trained in. I know one of the most popular things we ever did was right when COVID started, our digital learning specialist put together a How to Teach School Online class, and you can believe hundreds, several hundred, many hundreds of teachers, six, 700 teachers took that class like right away, because all of a sudden, we were all doing that. We have a team of people, if the schools want to really dig in and work on improvement or if they're cited by the state for needing improvement, that will come and help them do that, and we also have a science consultant who would work with any of your science teachers. So we, that's all under Universal Services and Supports. Six of your teachers went to our social emotional, these are those numbers across there are the people from your district who attended some of our events. So we have one participant in the Workface Learning. We, you won a $10,000 mini grant under Career and Technical Education from us, and a second one for $6,000. You've gotten program approval for your CTE program, and I know you've got big plans to do even better things down the road, and we're very excited for you and wanting to partner with you in that in any way we can. We've also had the social emotional, we have that every year. That was actually something Dr. Barnett helped start in our agency several years ago, so six of your staff went to that in August. And we have 12 people participating in the mentoring Teacher Mentor Induction Program. So that's Universal Services. That's the things that we provide for all teachers and all kids. And then we have a group of services called Targeted, and that's for kids who aren't special ed, but they have a special something that they need. So you can see Early Access. Families in your community who have a newborn baby or a one-year-old or a two-year-old, and either the doctor refers them or the parents themselves are a little worried that they're feeling like they're not talking when they should, or they're not calling, or not sure if something's not right. We have a whole team that go right into their home and sit with them and assess their child and help them figure out what, if anything, those children need, so that they're, by the time they're four, they're ready to go. We also have early childhood referrals, children who, when they hit age three, who do have some issues, they're a little behind, they need to get into a preschool program. We have early childhood specialists who help get those children going in a year early, so they have an extra year to catch up. You have 36 English learners in your district, and we have a person who we just hired this year who works with your ESL teachers and your children in any way that we can. You have a school-based interventionist that we help hire and deliver to you, and that person is working with children who are at risk in your schools or who need extra attention, help the principals and counselors out. You are getting ready, I think you haven't had Rachel's Challenge yet, have you?
No.
But you're getting ready. You'll have Rachel's Challenge, which is a wonderful program that will come to, is it, are you doing elementary, middle, and high?
Aye.
All grades. It's the story of, she was the first young girl murdered in the Columbine shooting, and her family has taken that and used that to, her message was always to be kind and be a good person, and so they used her story in a very wonderful way to help children realize, you know, you're doing a lot of damage when you're mean to your friends or, you know, on social media. So it's a very powerful, moving program that will be coming to your schools, that we actually helped, didn't he help write a grant to get the money to deliver that to all the school districts in our AEA. So you can see that we, we have master social workers, eight children in your district are getting some mental health therapy with that, 44 sessions so far. So you have children who have mental health needs, and our people are there for them, giving them therapy to get through whatever troubles they're going through. And then we have people like Steve Serban, he can tell you for himself.
Yes. So Field Director Support. The Field Director's a little bit different. The agency in the past had regional administrators who basically were in offices, and they supervised all the special ed people and helped out schools, LEAs. When Dr. Haas came, she had this wonderful vision for the Field Director. As Scott and Bill can probably tell you, some of the loneliest people in schools are principals. Sometimes we forget about them, we don't offer them professional development, and they don't get a big chance to go out and collaborate. They're always busy 24/7, right, Scott? So what we did this year is basic at Field Director, if you look at that first slide, there was my region in the north, and Harlan is one of my schools. So we offer professional development for principals. It's called Principal Impact. We've done that for the last two years. So at the end of this year, we'll have 53 principals that have taken Principal Impact with us. So we're making a big impact with our principals. See what I did there? And I think probably one of the best things, you've got two principals, Scott and Bill are both taking the class this year, and they'll probably tell you, one of the biggest things they rave about is collaboration with the principals, to get ideas from them, to be able to do breakout sessions with them, and then the four Field Directors kind of lead them through a scripted course for the year. And then we get to follow up with them, and we as a coaching model, we try to help them out with things that they have going on in their building. And one of the nice things about the Field Director position, we all have to have at least five years of experience as a principal and guiding change in schools, so we don't just go knock on Scott's door, and we've never been a principal or anything before, so he knows we've been in the battle with him and fought the good fight. So I think it's something that's really, really gone well the last two years. We actually went down to Houston this year and presented at the ASA Conference, and we had lots of people from all over the country asking us great questions about how can we get this going. I know Carrie and I both have had follow-up emails from people all over the country wanting to know about our model and how they could replicate that, so it's a great thing.
And then you also supervise our staff.
Yes, and that's, I was getting to, I supervise special, the speech-language pathologists and then the special ed representatives. So you've got two here that serve Harlan as far as special ed reps, and then you've got three SLPs that I supervise here. So I try to come to about one admin meeting here a month, and what I do is just kind of let them know what the AEA is doing, what services are going on in their building, and then I listen to things that they're doing, and I help consultants come into the building and get all that. I think we've made some big steps this year with getting good, good people in the building. They're just, some of the people that work at the AEA are just amazing. They're just top-notch and the best in their field, so anytime you can let them in the building for free, that's a good thing. Okay, so I think we can go on to the next one. Just like we talked about earlier, Ivan Gentry is our new Director of Specialized Services, and this is specifically Special Education Services.
Yeah.
And you can look at the bottom there, you can see all the different things that this entails, everything from assistive technology all the way to physical therapy, OT, specially-designed instruction, which special ed teachers refer to as SDI. All these services are lumped in here. Last year in your district, 23 initial IEPs were performed, kids that were diagnosed with a disability, and they held that initial to see if they're eligible for services. We had 63 that were reevaluations of their IEP plans. So my special ed rep would work with your special education teachers to make sure that they're progress monitoring, making sure they're meeting their minutes, and just kind of being overall seeing what they're doing. And then you have 353 last year validated IEPs within your district, so naturally you're busy. And then like Dr. Haas said earlier, we also serve Early Access, birth to five, so you can see we had eight initial of those last year and 14 validated within Harlan last year.
Seth, is that you?
Yeah.
That's your position?
It is. I probably should've let him.
Not at all.
So lots of great services, great people.
And these are all things, you know, the AEA's were created because for you to hire all those people to do all that in your school would first of all be impossible, because you don't need them full-time, so you have to hire a lot of part-time people, and they cost a lot of money and they're hard to find. So we are able to hire them and get the best of the best and send them out to you, and it works out great. So we do want to show you just a little video of one of our AEA people in your school, a former person, a speech-language therapist, Casey, and working with one of your, one of your children. It's just really cute, and I'll tell you a little story about this when we're done.
Is Dave Fringer on the next one?
Oh, I must, yeah, you might have skipped one. Do you want to go back?
If you want to go back.
Let's do that, yeah. We have one other session.
Because he's an important one.
And your district is just getting started with that, and that is our IT Services, which I think Steve's gonna talk about.
Where did he go?
It's right there.
Oh, right here.
Yep, right there.
Sorry.
So this is a whole nother, Executive Director Dave Fringer is in charge of Information Technology, Digital Learning, and Media Services, and some of the things that Dave, I had to make sure I got- I had to make sure I got notes from Dave, some of the things he's partnered with Harlan this year. He came in and did a tech audit with your IT department, and he shared that information out with your IT department and Dr. Burnett in a meeting of things that you could do, that we could assist with, or maybe that we could help, infrastructure-wise, everything like that. And then also, you guys are participating in the Lightspeed Content Filter. It was a three-year agreement, and if you would have done that on your own, it would have cost you $15 per student. We got it for $9.60, so you saved the district about $9,000 by using Dave. Also, Green Hills is going to be coming in and doing all your E-Rate stuff for you. So that'll be something that'll be taken off your IT plate, and Dave does a wonderful job with that.
Brian's plate.
Okay.
Brian's very happy about that. Brian's smiling.
He's very happy. You could speak to that, wouldn't you, with the AEA being able to help you?
It's super. I mean, he rates something you do so, it's so infrequent, it's hard to really stay on top of it, stay on top of it. And what's nice about Dave is he's got a structure he goes through to get all the forms filed at time. He actually has given Lisa and I some ideas on some things we could use that we haven't utilized in the past.
Awesome.
And that's your, this is your first time with him, right?
He actually helped us through a couple of things last summer, but this is the first time too, so.
Very good. E-Rate is a federal program you have to fill out, and you can imagine anything federal, get money from the federal government.
He knows how to answer questions.
This is, it can be, lots of people.
Yeah.
So that's another big part of it. And the digital learning people are the ones who help teachers know how to teach online, the coolest new software out there, the coolest new gadget, widget, aim, whatever. And you have people working with your teachers, our people working with your teachers, to get those skills, so they can keep, always try to keep a little bit up with the kids.
And you can see the media portion of this. We have van services deliveries. You probably see the Green Hills vans out. They come to the district twice a week, and you can see all the things that were checked out last year, that your teachers checked out. Everything from assistive technology items, book kits, novel sets. We have a lot of schools that, you know, it's hard to purchase novel sets that are up to date and that, and keep them up. So you can, the high school teachers can check those novel sets out directly from us. You can see, you have lots of use of that last year.
And the point there is that we buy it and have it, and then all the districts can use it, and then you don't have to buy it. All of these districts in our region don't have to buy those things. We have them, the teacher just needs it for two weeks while she teaches that novel or that book set, and then she can send it back, and then the next teacher in another district. So it's a very cost-saving part of our AEA for teachers.
These are the FOS science kits, the FOS kits?
Yeah, I don't think we do those anymore, but we do have science kits that we send out.
Okay.
Science curriculum. We have a giant planetarium. If any of your teachers want to take, that's a huge dome you put up, and the kids can go in and actually go through and see a planetarium. We have drones that can be checked out, if there's a classroom teacher that wants to do, ag teachers sometimes use those to do, you know, projects with ag. Anyway, we have lots of that kind of, we're shifting kind of away from books and print things, and more toward software and gadgets and widgets, the, like, what are those things you put on, and you can see virtually?
And the virtual glasses.
So things. We have lots of those, that sort of thing.
Sarah Finkley is our librarian for the districts we operationally share.
Right, right. So she's our employee that comes to you a couple of days a month, right, I think, or weeks?
And then she just, she checks in off day and night.
Okay, so now for the cute video, okay.
Skip.
Is this her egg?
There.
Is that the front?
She, that's.
Can you hear? So this is in your school?
That's his reward, he did a right gate.
Our school psychologists do a lot of reports, writing, paper book.
And Kylie has your PK through eighth grade.
This is your SBI, who's going to issue?
The room off the library down that wall.
Yeah, but she's moved now down here, where it's more private.
Good call.
So I have to tell you that little boy, the kindergarten preschooler, I believe, he does not speak. So the work is to try to get him to start talking. But I guess what happened one day is that when they were there filming, the, Casey was working with them and the teacher, and then he, at some point, the time was up, and he got up and twinkle in his eye, and he ran out of the room, just ran out of the room. So the teacher went and got him and brought him back. And he's still not talking, won't talk. And the teacher says, well, say goodbye to Ms. Casey. And he said, bye-bye.
Oh.
So he was only willing to talk to one person. So we're confident that she will cure him. Anyway, thank you very much for your time. We just wanted you to have a little glimpse, and remember that we're out here every day working in your district and serving you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, great.
But Jenny, she has brought more awareness I get up to.
Do you have any questions I guess I should ask?
How do teachers find out what is offered to check out?
Well, we send at a glance every two weeks, I believe. Is it every month? I don't recall. We send out to all your teachers. They get a newsletter from us, all, here's some classes you can take, here's this new program. I just got an email today, Northwestern College is starting a program, if you want to be a mental health, school mental health counselor. So it's a new program. So we send out all this information all the time about classes, or meetings, or conferences, or professional learning that they can do. So they learn that way. They have the catalog right online, so they can look in our media sheet.
What they can check out.
All what they want, and they can say what weeks they want it, and they sign it out, and we bring it to them.
So then you come and pick it up.
And we come and pick it up.
Very nice.
Anything else?
Great service.
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, he's got one.
Seth, share.
Yeah.
I know she, that she needs to use that one.
Yeah, do you need another one?
No.
Okay.
Can you hand that over to Scott?
Thank you.
Well, thank you so much for having me here again tonight. I'm excited to share what we've learned so far, and everything that I'm going to talk about is just in the book in front of you. So to this point, we have done our survey and our initial walkthrough, and the survey was through this thought extreme program that Jenny suggested, and I think it worked out really well, so hopefully, the teacher's seeing that.
Yeah.
Has anybody asked to use it yet?
No, not yet, Randy.
Catching us at a bad time.
Yeah, sorry, it is, it's a little, it's a little dicey. Maybe we'll remind him again.
Yes.
Sure. No, we found it very useful, so that was a cool spin on what we did, and now we'll talk about what we heard from that, and then what the, our techs and engineers talked about. So the way that it was set up was, there was an initial question that was asked, and the question that we came up with about facilities that every participant was asked to use was, as we look towards improving our district's facilities, what are the most important things we should be considering? So this was a really open-ended question, and this was to each, each school, each building. So we started the high school, went to the middle school, then primary and intermediate were together, but they answered separately. So that's how we got the information that was very building-specific. And then the next part, and then, so it's a couple of different layers.
Layers.
Layers to this. So that was one part, was, and then when we asked the question, what they're supposed to do with that is to then write down their thoughts. So very open-ended, they could say, it's hot, or I have a hole in my wall, or, you know, something, whatever they wanted to say about facilities. And then from that point, when they were done putting any thoughts they had, that came to mind from that question, they were able to then rate their, those thoughts as far as if it was important to them, or if it was not important to them, so five stars to one star. So they were, and they were encouraged to rate as many as possible. So the good thing was, hey, yep, I like this thought, I don't like this thought, and then just go down the line. So.
You could put in as many thoughts as you wanted to.
And they could rate each other's thoughts?
Yes.
And it was totally anonymous, so I didn't know that you had put whatever in from that. So you put your thought, and then you put why. But it's limited like a tweet, so you couldn't write a dissertation. But, and they were quick. And then, yeah, once you put your two or three thoughts, then you go back in and can rate, and they could rate for like a week. So that was a good thing, yeah.
Yes, we left it open for a week, and Jenny sent out a few reminders, but most of the, most of what was brought forward happened during this, this exchange. And there was a little bit of conversation that went on the tables, but there wasn't a lot of prompting, there wasn't a lot of diving into why or anything. It was just a very open opportunity for them to say what they wanted to say, and then be able to rate what was important or what was not important. So after they went through that exercise, they, we then asked a few questions that we were not able to specifically rate or, or say anything about, but just simple survey questions like you would normally get. So the first one, like on page five, my primary space meets my needs. So that's where they perform their daily tests. The next one is my support space meets my needs. So staff lounge meeting rooms. My primary space meets my students' needs.
This is just the primary school that you're seeing, so.
Yep, and I'm just going over the questions, and we did this for every single one, just to give a general idea of what, what the questions that are asked are. So my primary space is temperature-conditioned appropriately. I feel safe on school grounds. Indoor activity spaces such as the auditorium, the media center meet my needs. Outdoor spaces, and then what they think that meaningful reception of Harlan is. So there's a, there's a good survey, we got a lot of information back, and then now I'll go through the buildings and highlight just some of the specific things. You can go in and, you know, read these more specifically, and you'd be, more than willing to share the whole gamut of them. As you can see, there's a whole lot of thoughts and a whole lot of things you can read, and we just took the, the things that were most applicable to each building and put them here. So at the primary school, there were 24 participants, 47 thoughts, and 656 ratings. So asking the question, as we look towards improving our district's facilities, what are the most important things? The top thoughts that came across there were the playground. A lot of teachers thought that there was, there are opportunities for improvement, not only for safety, but to help them be more happy and helping get school. So outdoor space, fence, playgrounds. And one other thing that came up in the primary school, even though it's the newest, it is the newest building in the, in the district, but sound insulation in the hallways, that there's a lot of notes about it's loud and it's disrupting to learning. And that's something that can pretty easily be solved. So it's cool that people are willing to say it. So then, moving through the primary school, on page eight, so the primary, my primary space is temperature-conditioned appropriately through the seasons. When 14 say disagree, and 3 say strongly disagree, that's something that we'll look a little bit further into and see what, what's going on there. So then, on page 11, the outdoor space, activity spaces meet my needs. There's a lot that agree, but also a little amount disagree. So thoughts there. Playground needs to have handicap-accessible materials, fence around playground, fence around playground. So you can, you can start to see when they wrote these thoughts, and how many people were, were commenting and rating them. These aren't the, there could be double, some, some of them are doubled up because they're not, they weren't rating this specifically, but the notes that we have under each one of these are the ones that were most relevant to that question. Any questions with the primary school? Move over to the intermediate. So there are 26 participants, 69 thoughts, and 874 ratings.
Everybody could participate, right? The custodians, parents, secretary, yes, we had.
All teachers.
All teachers, yes, yes.
Everyone was available to, whether or not they did or not was.
Exactly.
Yep. So we tried to get as many as possible with Jenny's emails, and everyone was invited to the.
To participate.
Yep. So with the intermediate school, top thoughts that went with the question that was asked was, the intermediate building needs renovation, issues with the ceilings and carpet, and it's just very outdated. It's been around for a little while. Building infrastructure is outdated and sees numerous problems each year. Yeah, so you can read through and see what everyone was saying about that. The primary space meets my daily needs. So a lot agree, but then, a lot don't agree either. Even though the classrooms function, obviously function as a space, a learning, learning environment, there's opportunities here with, with each one of these questions to understand how to, that we can make that learning environment better, and make it easier for students to learn, and better for students to teach.
Are they the same questions?
Yes, they are the exact same questions. Yep, the exact same questions.
Different open-ended question at the beginning?
Same open-ended question.
Same open-ended, okay.
To every group.
Okay.
Yep. Same open-ended question.
And same non-open.
And then we just broke it out to how they were responding, how they were responding to, to, at each school.
Okay.
Or at each building, yeah.
And maybe you said this, but the community's perception question, that's what the participants think, the community's perception.
Correct. So you kind of, whether or not they live here, or where, where exactly they come from, you can kind of get an idea of, maybe they think that other, it's kind of a, you may get the right information, you might not with that one, but you kind of get an idea of, I know, I know a lot of people that think that this is the best school in the world, or, yeah. So then, the, another big one here was outdoor activity space. So plenty, plenty of opportunity for playground to improve. So the middle school, we had 33 participants, 76 thoughts, and 1,435 ratings. So they will have to rate. And so Chad with Green Hills was here. And so Chad with Green Hills was here to help us do that, that day. And he said that a good, a good percentage of ratings you get versus thoughts is 12 or something. And I think all, all of your staff were, it ended up being like 16. So, kudos to your staff for being, being engaged in the process, so. Right at the middle school, and let's see, the, one of the top thoughts was the auditorium needs updated. Even though it's a tax building, but, but not in the middle school.
Not in the middle school, but.
Yep, yep. And, yeah, so just lots of outside people come in and use the facility. And someone said they're not sure if it's safe. But heating and air needs updated, roof and window, lab facilities. So just improvements, other improvements for learning. And then the primary space, on page 27, "My primary space meets my students' needs." There's opportunity for, for some updates there with the comment of the science rooms, lab facilities, technology. And then the next page, conditioning. Now, even though that still is the second newest facility in the school, it's 20 years, and mechanical equipment is in that 25-year range when you need to start looking at potentially making sure it's being maintained properly and end of its useful life, so looking in to see if we're getting close to that and how we can keep it moving as best as possible. And then the high school, 56 participants, 149 thoughts, and 2,393 ratings. So, they went for the ratings. I guess, any questions on previous buildings? So, one thing that was kind of a theme through, even though it was, obviously the auditorium is not at every school, but someone at each school made a mention to the auditorium wanting, wanting and needing to be updated. So that was just one of the threads that was consistent throughout. So here, "The classrooms need updated." A lot, a lot of comments about natural light and the walls and sound. And those are all, those are all things that really affect, affect learning and affect teaching and how happy everyone is in those, in those areas as they're trying to teach and learn. So natural light updates. They want a space that's, that's warm and inviting, an auditorium.
There's a lot of comments on page 34.
Yeah, this, every.
Probably doesn't surprise that here.
No. Those had to be in black and white on paper.
And these are, the, the only thing that was asked was the thought exchange question, and then everyone just said what they, what's on their mind.
I like how this was, um, done. This is, you know, very nice information.
Will a version of this eventually go to the public?
It can.
Oh, we will send, we've also talked about sending a thought exchange out to the public.
Yeah, that's kind of what I'm saying.
Yep.
Yeah, doing a similar thing to the, to the.
To the public.
Yeah, and they can, it could be put up at ID or anywhere, and it's a QR code, and they can sit there and fill it out. So, yeah, it's, it's really easy. And that's, I don't know of a better way to get us up than that, so it's really cool.
And send it out on our social media.
We can send it to social media when we have it on your website, which is hopefully approved of.
Waiting on you.
And they do all the analytics behind the scenes too, so all these report. I mean, you guys did this, some of the stuff too, but they, all the analytics are done behind the scenes.
Yeah, and it's, when they put up the rate, the ratings and bring, that's whatever the next one is for you to rate, it's totally generic and random. So, when they start getting a lot of responses back, they don't put the highest ones up so that that one just keeps getting, getting more ratings or anything.
So you, and I apologize if you said this already. So if you see like, kind of some low-hanging fruit on here that could be fixed now, you know, like, you know, is there something simple that can make it so the kids aren't cold in the classroom or whatever?
Sure.
Like, is that being looked at?
Well, Brian, I think we can answer that. Mike, our new director of facilities, Mike Eric, has, is very good at fixing that stuff. So he has found already like two or three.
Some of the problem, or is, is actually, it's just stuff that's probably been broken. Just hasn't fixed.
So we want to see what you files missing.
Making those repairs.
We are, we are actually going.
Well, that's new.
That's, you know, that's the plan.
Okay, explain what's happening here is actually this air handler unit is an original air handler unit.
Sorry, these are the ones?
Well, look, this, this portion of the building is actually autonomous from the rest of the building and the air handler. And actually, that corner right there out, and out this way. And to replace that original air handler was probably going to be in excess of $200,000. Because it's autonomous, we were able to go with, these are called, I believe they're called heat pumps. If I remember wrong, they're called heat pumps.
Yeah.
And we were able to get one for every room. And this is a solution that works here. This is going to cost us a fraction of that, I think, I think it was $94,000. So, that was pretty easy, pretty easy decision, going from $250,000 to $93,000. Fortunately, we can do that here, we can't do that in the rest of the building. Um, we, that is one project that's going on right now to kind of mitigate some of the, to answer your question, to mitigate some of the issues. One of the other things is, we still have air handling units that are being, um, they're pneumatic, which means they're really, really, really old, and they have to be adjusted manually. We are, they are actually about halfway through getting the control system in the high school and the middle school to where it's all digital. That requires you to get basically a new crane, for lack of a better way of putting it. They're about halfway through that. And then there's a third project that will probably not happen till, I'm guessing, they said they think they could work on it during the winter, but they're not. Right now, they're still trying to secure the parts. But there's an air, another original air handling unit that's up in the penthouse, if anybody knows what that's, up on the top of the building and in a closed area. It's really cool being in there. But, uh, they're going to retrofit that one. That was a much, 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 option. That, I think, off the top of my head, don't call me, but it's 30, 30 to $40,000 on that. To replace that, we would have had to have a huge crane to come in and you had to basically rip the penthouse apart, so they're going to retrofit. So those are three things we're going that will help some. That's not answering all the questions, so.
Yeah, I just want to, you know, I, I would hate for, if there was, if there was something that we could do to make the students and staff more comfortable or safer or whatever, for them to have to wait for a big project or wait for new facilities. I just, I guess, I would encourage that.
We tried, we tried to address. We did try to address the low hanging fruit essentially, in well.
And Brian's got a heck of a list put together as far as what those little things that have, they've been taking care of in the past three years. It's, it's real good. So, but to answer your question, are those other things that don't require a large project to do, like I said, in the, in the primary school? Adding sound paneling in the, in the hallways, that's something that could easily be done? And that, and it won't be, how do the kids get up there and start screaming? You know, so, yes, and then in the next step of what we're doing is going to be to then take this information and then start combing through that and making, and then it's prioritization is the next step. So, that's, that's what we're working towards, yep.
So we will ask for public participation to have a thought exchange, that, that's coming. We also are getting a core facilities group together. So probably, whatever we decide tonight with the new board, knows who's going to be on Buildings and Grounds Committee. Um, and if it's all of you or if it's one representative. And then, just a core group of people in the community who, we have several that have already come to us and said they want to help us with that. So, that's our, that's our next step in.
Yep, so any of these decisions and any of this information is not going to be done in a vacuum in a, in a room with the door shut. We want, we need input, we want input, and that's, we're just here, I'm just here to help facilitate.
And this is the first, you guys are the first ones to see these results? And then in January, the first with the January, Patrick's going to come back and they're going to do a visioning session with staff too, so that we can make sure we get staff's input.
Yep, yeah, so that'll have the visioning that's happening, and then we'll have the facility committee will start meeting hopefully in, in January.
In January.
Yep.
So do we need to return these?
Nope, these are.
No, okay, I didn't know.
Please, please read.
I didn't know since, um, the staff didn't know if we.
No, we'll, we can share, we can share.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, none, none of this information, none of this is, is. Or not proprietary, but this, you know, these are all, this is all your information, all of the school districts.
It's, it's interesting that, for example, the high school survey feels safe on school grounds. It, it, basically, it's pretty, pretty agreed that it feels safe, but there's a substantial number of those that don't, and I think that would consider that. I would consider that, more hanging fruit that we want, at least no exaggeration, they're talking about these comments, you know.
Yeah, to address that, I don't know, the schools that have been built in the last 10 or 15 years have a vestibule, that's a safety vestibule, so that's, we have that probably at the primary.
We'll cover that next.
Yeah, so I think it's kind of a big expense if we, yes, for sure.
Any, any other questions about the survey? Please, please read it, please ask questions any, anytime. So then, the next portion of this is the general findings report from the architects that we have involved in this project. So C and D, Corcoran and Andrew were here on site, did, did their analysis. And this is a, a watered-down but very informative and ties back to the survey and what the, what the staff was, was thinking and the thoughts that they, they shared. So, I guess it isn't the next one. So for outdoor space, they, they tied that back to the, the two areas of the primary and intermediate. Uh, the next page, auditorium, that's, that's very high on a lot of people's list from all the, all the staff within the district, not just the high school who uses it. So each one of the descriptions that they have ties it back to the students and learning environment and the improvement. And then, interior environments, I was talking about acoustics earlier, and that's not just for the primary school, but for the high school with sound transmission between the metal walls. And that's, that's causing disruptions for the students and for the teachers. And also usability and expandability within the classroom and being able to, to move around or move things when you need to. So. Natural light was also another really big one for the high school. Yep, so the high school and also the intermediate had quite a few.
Middle school.
Yeah, the, yeah, yeah, intermediate, and I think, yeah, high school, middle school, and intermediate. And then thermal comfort, that's, everyone likes to come to.
How did that work?
No, but I, I'm just specific, you know, on that one.
She's like, take care of this.
Air in the gym.
And we just got high school.
And then, we were talking about earlier, the safety and security. So, yeah, the primary is, is the only one that has that quote-unquote "secure entry" sequence. And so that's something to look at for the entries at the middle school, high school, and, and the intermediate.
So I have a question on the, because they, they still have, they don't have a vestibule, but I recall from like the last bond that got put out, it was like a bid, I don't know what the bid from CBA would be, but it was like 125K per entry to quote "update." And, and my reflection there was, it passes the drunk uncle test. Like, you can't get, you have to get buzzed in. Most people are wedging doors or there's practices. You can't wedge doors. So, I'd be really curious in what the actual, like, safety increase above perceived safety, because I truly think that the vestibule, short of any research that shows that it actually prevents violence.
Sure.
Um, the, the, the actual safety increase, bang for buck, versus perceived safety on essentially one more door later that locks, when you got windows right next to it. I guess I'm really curious on, on what you guys would offer for, like, what's the justification for the cost to add double entry?
Sure.
Outside maybe weather savings, because you've got a weather barrier, but I, I don't think there's research to support, and I'd love to be proven wrong on that, um, on actual violence prevention, to have a, a second locked door if the first one fails.
Yeah, the, nobody, there's, there's a lot of perceived safety that goes along with it, obviously. If there's, if you have to go through another door, that there's somebody sitting there that has a bone, that they're going to call the cops right, right away. Or they see, and it, see somebody coming to the front door that looks suspicious, that, that's one thing. But, the door that the teacher properly opened out back, that's, that's, that's not a secure entry. But it's, it's more of a holistic look about security. And yes, the front entry in that secure sequence, there, there is data that says that that sequence does help deter. Is it going to save some, is, is because that sequence, because that person wanted to come in, going to actually save people? I don't, I don't know, but that's, that's the industry standard, is to do something like that. And there's also, there's different levels to doing that too. If there's, if it's set up correctly and you don't have to walk across a hallway to do it, then just putting another door there and popping a hole in a wall is, can happen. But if, if the, um, the high school where it is across the hall, and you have, there's, you're immediately in and there's stairs right here, or you're, you know, there's a hallway, you know, there's, that's, that isn't a good sequence to enter into. So, it, I, I won't say that, I'm an architect, and that's something that, all the other schools that I've worked with, it's, we need a secure entry, we need it, but it's making sure that you're not just looking at the entry, but you're looking at the whole school-wide, uh, security plan, making sure that those, that back doors.
Not locked, no.
Yeah.
I just remember being about, about, like, about north of, yeah, it was about 375, close to 400,000, just the double, double entry, already locked doors, and so I was curious.
And there, there's, there's a lot of different ways of cutting the cake. And we can just look, we can look at it, and we can look at them all.
I would just encourage, like, yeah, I would just, yeah, if, if it is worth it versus the aesthetics or, because yeah, that would be a tough one.
Yeah, that, that's, that's going to be an interesting one, uh, that, but that's, we're here to try to. You're, when, you know, it's, what, what's the highest priority is, and it, you know, obviously, safety and security is a very, very high priority. So, how can we, how can we take care of that need and also meet, meet budget that it needs to be? But then also be able to take care of some of the other items that, that come along with this.
That kind of goes back to my question a couple of minutes ago. I guess I was looking at the order in this, and I think I would have liked to have seen safety and security.
Sure.
Ahead of anything else. But, you know, just, it just, and a first-line sentence report, I'm thinking, how it's perceived.
Right.
That we know, yeah, this is a big deal, you know, it's not fifth in our priority, you know. But I didn't know what the order, if this was just the order that these reports are all done, or.
This was, this was just how it came out. I don't, yeah, there was, there is no prioritization in the way that this is, this was presented, so.
The prioritization comes through the, the feedback from staff, the feedback from the community.
Mm-hmm, yep, and where it's from, yeah, but no, I, thank you for that comment. We'll use that in the future. Any other questions on what we talked about before? So then, educational environments, this, the image on page seven here shows what that open and collaborative. open and collaborative learning environment looks like and you do have some spaces available, those two that are circled there, within the classroom space that are lockers that are underutilized right now, that could become a space, that could look like, look something like that. So that doesn't require moving all of your walls and totally gutting a whole school to, to get a really cool collaborative 21st century learning opportunity. And then another opportunity that, another opportunity was opening up the, I think Jenny, you mentioned this, opening up the media center to the commons and having a better, better view and getting people into the, into the, into the media center. So just a couple of different ways there. And then that's wrapped up with the, some more ideas in the back here. And then the last thing which we don't really probably want to read a whole bunch about, but it all ties back to, you know, the student learning environment and being comfortable is the mechanical electrical plumbing and you can get into as much detail as you want within mechanical speak, but you know, it comes down to the, how old, how old are these and do they, do they need replaced or can they just be retro fit as part of air conditioning units and in the cannon for it? And what can we do about the smell, sewer smell in, in restrooms and things like that?
This is great.
So then we already kind of talked about what, where we, where we came from and where we're going and the next steps are going to be the staff visioning section in the first weekend, or first week in January and then getting the, the facilities committee together hopefully in January as well. And then from there we start some prioritization exercises.
Thank you.
Nice.
Very good. Yeah. Okay, the other, so that was my two. We need to review the election results as part of our meeting today, so.
For Lou Pinter?
They are linked. Do you want me to put them up? Yes? I think we just have to review them and it still says the same people won. Nothing's changed.
Nothing's changed.
The thing over there, you have to come out. Uh huh, there you go. And then how are we thinking of opening from, there you go.
So, um, is this just, is this is what was given to us by the auditor? Do you want to talk about it?
No, we don't.
Okay. So this just basically are the official results from Shelby County and each district. So it lists who ran in each district and then the number of votes and then it's signed by the board supervisors. So, so there's District One, here's District Two. District Three.
Family by the name of Scattering has, has people in every district.
What's that?
Yeah, the number's different in every district.
So the family, with the by the name of Scattering, yes.
Scattering. But the total numbers are different too. So District Four. District Six. And that's it. So I think we just need to review those and note that we did. Okay, and then the last thing that I have on my agenda is just to, we would like to thank Seth, Jessica and Amy for their service on the board and we very much appreciate it and we have some little comments for you. You guys have served.
That's cool.
Thank you.
Grammy award.
Right.
People's choice.
People's choice.
Thank you very much for your, your service to the board.
Yes.
We'll be asking you to be on some other committees, I'm sure.
Right. I already asked Seth and he told me no, so I. Working on the next one.
Okay. We're good? Yeah, we're good. Okay, we will move on to our action items. The first under our action items is the resignation of personnel. Jeremy Rotatic, elementary kitchen manager. Greg Blatt, eighth grade football coach. June Schleimer, special Olympics coach. Carissa Smith, elementary teacher associate. Jamie Briggs, elementary baker. And Peggy Carlson, middle school cook. Any questions on any of those? Not, I will take a motion for the approval of the resignation of personnel.
So move.
By Al.
Second.
Second by Monte. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Next item on the agenda is the employment of personnel. Angela Davis, elementary teacher associate. Jamie Briggs, elementary kitchen manager. Steve Savane, director of education. Elizabeth Pitts, elementary teacher associate. And Peggy Carlson, middle school baker. We just need to mention Steve. We would like to approve the hiring of Steve as the director of education this evening. However, the contract is not ready as it will be a 2022 employee contract, so the employee or the contract would just be approved later in the spring. Any questions on any of that?
I think the idea was we were, we were approving then the, you know, the position and Steve in that position, so.
And, and the contract.
So we are assured that that position is filled and of course Steve is assured that he is employed.
It's just that your contract would be approved in the spring.
Yep, totally understand.
Makes sense.
Is that the offer sharing?
We, yes, we haven't yet. I'm speaking with HSTW Friday and also I can.
Well, that's another reason.
Well, and another reason is we don't know our insurance costs.
The insurance is.
Yeah, so that's one reason the contract can't be finalized. But yes, we want, you know, to approve the position and approve Steve in that position.
Is Green Hills carrying point two of that FTE?
No.
No, in the future.
No.
Oh, no, so it's just across districts?
No.
Okay.
He will be a Harlan employee, does that make sense?
Yep.
So then he'll be, so he won't be with?
Nope.
So he'll be with Harlan community.
Okay.
So you'll be ours.
Yes, welcome.
Sorry, it's a little bit.
No, that's all right. I totally understand.
The job stories is just.
The shortage is, you want to get started on stuff like that.
Absolutely, yes. So any questions? I won't be, often have you. Yes. Any of the employment of personnel? Not, I'll take a motion for the approval of the employment of personnel. By Jessica?
Second.
Second by Joanie. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item on the agenda is the approval of early retirement requests. Any questions on that or?
We have four, right?
I was just going to say, what's the update for?
Four.
And I can't even know what was it, limited?
Five.
Five.
I think it's our limit.
So there's one available. And it closes when?
But I think it's, I think it's already closed.
Yeah.
Too late.
It's too late, Randy.
No. No.
Close to that.
Any questions on that at all?
And when did, when did that come out?
They'll go out in a minute, in a minute.
We, we put names in the past, so it's just, this will be approved and then.
Okay, yep, gotcha. And they will be approved for their early retirement.
And then we'll be posting for their jobs.
And yes, we will be.
Like next week.
Yeah.
Gotcha. Okay. Any other questions? Now I'll take a motion for the approval of early retirement requests. By Joe?
Second.
Second by Al. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Next item on the agenda is the approval of early graduation requests. And any questions on that?
Am I, do we have?
Yeah, that's, I couldn't remember.
Ten.
About pretty normal, Scott.
Mm-hmm. They're all in. Just asking to get out of here.
Double check. Some are starting college already.
Oh, it's pretty neat.
Yeah.
Any, any other questions?
I just think the majority can go to college or working. Military.
Oh, half and half. Yeah, it's about half and half. Um, I think, yeah, listen, only one is.
So they're invited to walk across that graduation?
Yes, that is correct, yeah.
There is one that submitted that took their name out. Is that what you were checking?
Yeah, that's what I'm looking for.
Yeah. So we're originally a lot.
Okay, there aren't any other questions, I will ask for a motion for the approval of early graduation requests.
So move.
By Seth?
Second.
By Jessica? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the LAO plan with proposed plan changes. So the LAO plan is for English language learners and LAO is the last name of someone that I just learned. But it's a lawsuit.
LAO versus Nichols.
Thank you very much. Scott is in charge of the LAO plan. So.
Yeah, the first of LAO plan, it's, I don't know, it's probably a 25-page document and it just gives you a handbook on services that they get and try to make sure all kids are on a fair playing field no matter where you're at.
I'd like the changes.
And the changes are, in the past, we've, we've had to get online and actually the training, the A is, it takes about six hours, it's, it's this module training and it's pretty extensive. So now we've, we've got some new language that we are ESL teacher and instructional coach can go through the training and then present a 30-minute PD, going from 30 minutes of PD rather than six hours to our staff. So they'll present at the high school, middle school and at the elementary. They've already presented at the high school for their 30 minutes there, so within the next couple of months they'll hit all the buildings and, but that's, that's a nice change there, yeah. And it's, it's really practical. I mean, it's real world because it's what, it fits into our system here and not something that's on a module that doesn't really apply, how does it work here and what does it look like? We talk a lot about accommodations and modifications for our Yale students and so it's very practical training for us.
Anna Gill's very good. She's our teacher K-12, but she's excellent.
Oh, gotcha.
Okay, any, any questions on the LAO plan or the proposed changes? Now I'll take a motion for the approval of LAO plan with proposed changes.
So move.
By Monte?
Second.
Second by Joe? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Next item on the agenda is the approval of district at-risk plan. So we have to update the at-risk plan every?
You're supposed to do it periodically. It's, ours is a couple, two, three years old, so.
So I wrote a new at-risk plan, it basically just shows there's, there's an at-risk pot of money that we get to spend, so it's for things, you can use it, pretty much anything to help a child not drop out of school. So ours include our social work services.
Personal guidance counselor.
Some of our guidance counselors.
So yeah, anybody that works with attendance.
Teachers, renter, renter will eventually be in there, our school-based interventionist, so, and we could, if we have intramural programs or anything after school, those kinds of things could be, it could be put in that.
Lot to do with engagement.
So to, to define an at-risk kid, is it behavioral and academic? Like are there certain parameters or is it just kind of?
There are seven things, but I don't know if you'll pass bigger or side more.
Yeah, I just, yes.
Attendance is one.
Attendance, grades, behavior.
Behavior. Are they connected to school?
Connected to school, so.
And social.
And this would be any age, I mean, any grade level? Yep. 3K, 312. So any kind of intervention that we would do could go under this. I think it'd be at-risk one year and not the next two. Any questions? Now I'll take a motion for the approval of the district at-risk plan. By Jessica?
Second.
By Seth? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Next item on the agenda is the approval of modified supplemental amount for LEP instruction beyond five years in the amount of $12,158.16.
Okay, I'm going to use this because we do have three new board members, I'll kind of use this as a little bit of a teaching thing, if that's okay, because it's something we do annually. If we have a student that's in the, they're, they're an LEP student and after we onboard them, if they're still in, they're still receiving services after five years, it's noted in SRI, our student reporting that we do to the state, then we get a weighted amount and essentially the reason they do, they, they give this to us to cover, I mean, use kind of, it's like the excess cost is similar to when you have a sped deficit, what the state and federal government gives us to educate a specialized student.
So LEP is language.
It's never enough, thank you. I was daring to say it nicely, but it's never enough, that's the reason we have sped deficit. Well, essentially we get some extra authority here to be able to educate these students. So at worst, kind of like sped deficit.
So language, it's, it's a, it's, it's the same as the English language learner, so if they haven't become proficient in English by five years, we get this additional.
Right, yeah, that's it.
Any questions on that? Now I'll take a motion for the approval of modified supplemental amount for LEP instruction beyond five years in the amount of $12,158.16. Some, by Joanie?
Second.
By Joe? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Next item on the agenda is the approval of modified supplemental amount for enrolled out, not on prior year count in the amount of $21,144.
I'm assuming you're looking at.
What brand?
Another teaching moment here. These are students that were not on the open enrollment list that we had last year. I'm going to give you an example, let's say we have a family that lives right on the border to the EHK Xyra district and they, because logistically it's easier for them to attend school there, they go there. Well, they might have a student that was in preschool or even younger than that, that wasn't going to school, that wasn't counted last year, they go to kindergarten this year, they get counted this year. So what this enables us to do is get really basically on-time funding, current funding for that student that wasn't on that list last year. Okay? So it's essentially, it's, it might be somebody that moved, moved to Harlan, but they, they wanted their kids to stay at HSTW, so they're open enrolling, they wouldn't have been on the list last year, so we get on-time funding for those for this year.
So these are.
Does that make sense?
Perfect. And what is that for? Is that four students?
Um, that, I think it's three.
Three.
Yeah, I'm doing, just looking at arithmetic, I think it's three.
Are these actual dollars or authority?
It's authority.
So, so we may, on both of these, either one of these, we may or may not, we have the authority to go get it.
Essentially what, what happens, Al, is, is every year when we get, when we get our cash reserve, the first thing that's back flowing is sped deficit, obviously, and I think you've been around long enough to realize that, but this is, it's also getting funded through that.
How is that compared to last year or, I mean?
It's.
Oh, okay.
That's a tough question.
All right.
That one, the one went down, the one went up.
Okay.
This one, I believe, the LEP one, I believe, is the one that came down and this one went up.
Okay.
Okay.
I could look it up if you want to know exactly.
Please, stop.
I know.
Yeah, they're always gonna fall in that way.
Yeah, pretty close. Brian, Brian knows his number, so...
Any other questions? Now I will take a motion for the approval of modified supplemental amount for enrolled-out-not-on-prior-year-count in the amount of $21,144.
So move.
By Al.
Second.
By Seth, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the PE waiver, which we do every year.
Basically, what that is, it's set up to where you go, PE should be every other day is how it's set up statewide, and if you wanted to do the PE waiver, you can condense that into one semester. What that does for our kids is they take PE one semester, then it opens up for another semester of an elective. So that's the benefit of it. And, yeah, do it every year.
Several years.
Any questions on that? Now I'll take a motion for the approval of the PE waiver. Some move. By Joanie.
Second.
By Monty, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is the open enrollment request.
So we had two open enrollment requests. Student A was a senior who has some special education needs and wants to open enroll from Xyra at Fort Hamilton. They're in a specialized program that we do not have, that we cannot offer here, so my recommendation is that we deny this open enrollment request because we can't offer the services that they need. Student B is a student who, the resident district is IKM Manning, and I think in the past, the student had attended Harlan and then decided this past year to try IKM Manning and has decided they want to come back. So the superintendent, Trevor, at IKM Manning, has approved that request, so he could start a semester and come with us and start a semester. So I would recommend that we approve this request. I talked to Mr. Mueller and he said he's a great student, so we're glad that he can come back.
Any questions on either of those? Okay. I think we should do these separate since we're denying one, so let's take a motion for approval to deny the open enroll request for student A. By Jessica.
Second.
By Al, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carried. Now we will do a motion for the approval of the open enrollment request for student B.
Some move.
By Seth.
Second.
Second by Joe, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carried. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the approval of contracts and agreements. Any questions on those?
Not unless Jenny has some concerns on any of them.
No, we're very excited to get a new website and start voting on that, so... Excuse me. So this is, it starts in January, correct? The other contract? Yes. Yes, she... So that's the second semester. Okay. And then you'll be looked at again next. Next. Okay.
The online process, payment processing, is that used for the Cyclone store?
It already is. Well, they just changed that, Joe. They have an account, right, online?
Yeah. Did you say Cyclone store?
Yeah.
Okay. Cyclone store, just from last month, you approved the...
Yes.
That new account. And what they're doing is, is, and in the past, we've always run everything through Easy School Pay, and it was the latter of a better way of putting it, Joe, was getting clunky because Cyclone Corrigan was using it a lot and it was kind of not facilitating them being able to open their marketplace up. So they switched here just last month, I believe, and they're doing it, and I'm not very techie, so I'm probably gonna say, but it's Square IT, I think. I think it's the platform they're using. And they also, what we did is, we then, we separated their online clearing bank account separate of the other one that we would have, get checks and balances. And it's great for them because they don't have to handle checks at all.
But that way, Joe, will be directly on our new website, for sure.
Yeah, so that one really have, they'll have access, that's really...
Yeah. And on the app, I'm sure. This has an app as well, so we can do it on the phone, it'll be easier.
Did I answer your question?
Yeah, I'm just trying to get my mind around, so we'll have separate payment processing?
Yep. Which actually works a lot better. It's worked. We had one month and it's been a whole lot easier, a whole lot better, a whole lot cleaner.
Any other questions? Now I'll take a motion for the approval of contracts and agreements, SOCS website contract and website content and communication manager contract.
Some move.
By Monty.
Second.
By Joanie, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is the second reading of board policies. Got mixture in there of... Four hundreds, five hundred, six, sevens, and eight hundreds. Any questions on any of that?
Were there any changes from our first reading?
No. There aren't any questions, I'll take a motion for the approval of the second reading of board policies. By Jessica.
Second.
And a second by Joanie, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is the first reading of board policies, and these were the 100th series.
It was not that.
Any questions on those? Joanie, Joe, or Monty?
They're mostly like the IAS.
Yes.
IASB ones, correct.
And lots of forms.
Lots of forms.
Appreciate that work on that.
Yes, thank you.
It was a pretty read for some others.
So next month, there will be a second reading on those and then a first reading on the next, the 200 set, is that, are we going to, no, I forget.
Let me just look real quick. It's probably the next...
Will you take care of assigning people to that?
Yep.
Okay. Awesome. I will take a motion for the approval of the first reading of board policies 100 series.
Some move.
By Joe.
Second.
By Monty, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is our consent agenda. Any questions?
Now I had three questions on the bills for Brian and Brian called me back after I sent them to him.
A question I have got answered too, so...
Okay. Awesome. If there aren't any other questions, I'll take a motion for the approval of the consent agenda.
So move.
By Al.
Second.
Second by Joanie, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is the adjournment of the retiring board.
So move.
By Jessica.
Second.
All in favor. Aye.
If I say...
Opposed, motion carried.
Yeah. Thank you guys.
It's part of the meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so as the superintendent, I'm the president for about five minutes and will preside over the meeting. I'll call the meeting to order and just determine that we do it for him, so it's 7:42. Catherine's going to administer the oath of office to our newly elected board members.
Ready, ready, ready. All right. I've just got so many more. And we determined that we do it for each person?
Yes.
Okay.
Out loud.
Out loud. We already did Joe's earlier this month, so next is Gregory Black. Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa and that you will faithfully and impartially, to the best of your ability, discharge the duties of the office of school board member in Harlan Community School District as now and hereafter required by law?
I do.
Thank you. Here is your certificate, sir. Mr. James Reichel, do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa and that you will faithfully and impartially, to the best of your ability, discharge the duties of this office of the school board member in Harlan Community School District as now and hereafter required by law?
I do.
Thank you very much. Ms. Jade Albertson, do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa and that you will faithfully and impartially, to the best of your ability, discharge the duties of the office of the school board member in Harlan Community School District as now and hereafter required by law?
I do. Thank you very much.
Well, for you, now we have to do you as well. So do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa and that you will faithfully and impartially, to the best of your ability, discharge the duties of the school board member in Harlan Community School District as now and hereafter required by law?
I do.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I don't remember ever getting clapped either.
I don't either.
It's a nice gesture.
Okay, so next on our agenda is the election of the board president, so our, do I have a nomination for board president? I nominate Al. The president.
I would like to second that nomination.
Any other nominations?
I'll put my name also. If it's possible to do that.
I think you have to have someone nominate you.
Oh, yeah. There, I got the time anyway. Good luck. Hold on. Not me.
Great nominee. Is there a second?
Takes a little time, doesn't it?
I'll second.
Okay, then we do a roll call vote, so we will go... We have discussion first? Oh, yes. Go ahead. Good, go ahead. I just think that being on the school board is a tremendous learning curve and I just think it's important that we have someone who has the experience and the knowledge of grasping everything that goes with being on the board.
Yeah.
And I think it gives you personally, it's just, I just think we need experience.
The reason I want to second Al is because, to your point, just, Al's been here how many, how many years?
Eighteen, I think. Twenty, or, let's see, I started in '04, so seventeen.
Ton of knowledge and expertise, like Joanie said, but not only that, Jenny's making tremendous strides and I feel, nothing against you guys, but you're new. I feel Jenny can continue those strides with someone that already knows a lot about how the board is ran and things like that, so it doesn't slow Jenny down, so...
I guess I seconded Jim just to find out what you have to say. I'd at least like to know what you think your qualifications are before I say you can't do it.
Sure. I guess the main thing is I have the time and I'm very efficient, so I like, I'm not a great, real fond of long meetings and like to get things done. I think, we talked, and I'll be honest, I believe personally, someone with experience on the board should be the president. That's, trying to have a discussion, a little bit of time. Having said that, people with great experience can make bad decisions and people with none can make good decisions, so... What's your goal, Phil?
Well, my reason for running again was I think we've got some really positive forward movement right now and I feel like I've got an understanding of the workings and I like the, some of the new initiatives that we're seeing, new leadership that we're seeing, new ideas, and I just felt like I wanted to run again and be, have a seat at this table. And if I, if you guys want me in the president's role, I'm willing to do that.
Do we have a discussion? Okay, I think we do a roll call vote, so we go around to each person and then you say either Al or Jennifer. Jade, we'll start with you. Sorry. I know, sorry. I only get to be president for five minutes, so...
Jim, you'll be my...
Al.
Jim.
Al.
Al. Jim.
I guess I'll say Jim.
No, sorry, I was trying to, just, can we, can we just do it again for me, please? Jade said Jim, Joanie said Al, Joe said Jim, Monty said Al, Al said Jim, and Jim said Jim. Four to three.
So it's four to three, Jim, as the president.
By the way, I've been happier to have lost.
You have a choice.
Yes.
Okay. So now you get to take over, Jim, and for the election of vice president.
Is there any nominees for the election of the vice president?
I would like to nominate Joanie. I think that she'd bring some really good ideas to that.
I'll second.
Can I nominate Al?
I'll second.
And, I should say, Al, did you accept?
I guess I would. I mean, I won't do what this board wants.
Do you think I'm second? Greg. Oh, great. Speak up. Oh, yeah. I remember now, sorry. I remember now.
By you nominating Al, is that a statement that you'd rather not?
No, 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 I would do either. I would, I'm like Al, I will do whatever the board wants, but I, I'm just going back to, I think Al has more knowledge and more experience than I do, so that's, I look up to Al and so I just, he's just good.
I guess we'll go around the table. Should we start this way? This time, Greg, if you want to start?
I'll vote Al.
This is an interesting dynamic, isn't it?
Yes, it is.
I feel like Joanie is perfectly capable of handling this, so I'm gonna vote Joanie.
I guess toss it, both have lots of experience and knowledge here, so both the right choice.
Yeah, I agree with that. I'll vote Joanie.
Either way would work for me. Gosh, if I vote Al, that's pounding. I think I'll vote Al.
I'm gonna read this out to you.
Wow, I'm gonna vote Al.
I'm also going to vote Al.
Okay, I'll vote Al. Did Jade, did you?
Yes, I voted Al.
So I do too.
I look forward to working with you. I think it's going to be a great, a great year. Very good. Thank you.
All right. No thank you.
Okay. Approval of agenda. So we approved the agenda that we just had.
For this meeting, yeah. We approve it for, yeah.
Okay, does anybody want to, so approve the agenda.
Some move. Second.
Okay. Discussion, I do.
I don't know that there are any discussion like this, it's just, since we have to have the second meeting, so normally we put them all in there, but we don't have them right now.
Okay. The appointment of board secretary and treasurer.
I think that's a formality, because that's Catherine as board secretary and Brian as the treasurer by default. We don't have to vote.
Good, good. Okay.
So then I think we just make a motion against to approve that.
Sure, we make a motion to approve the appointment of board secretary and treasurer.
I make that motion.
And Brian, huh?
Also Al.
Okay, would somebody want to make the motion for the name of district depository mid-states bank? Oh, I see, vote on it first.
So all those in favor?
Yeah. Okay, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Never mind.
Name of depository, mid-states bank.
So moved.
Second. Second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. And the official publication, the Harlan Tribune motion? So moved.
Second.
Joni, okay?
All in favor? Any discussion first? So why is, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, establish meeting date, time and location.
So we did have a couple of suggestions on this, just, I think in the past, meetings have been earlier and on a different Monday, so it's a little bit difficult, and I'll let Brian talk this a little bit, it's better if we could meet on the third week, just for billing purposes and we can get everything done and, and you get better, like right now, the report that was on here was from October and it's December, so we could get you, try to get you November's and December versus, so that's just something to think about.
We'll probably run into, it's the second Tuesday, it could fall on the eighth and.
Second Tuesday or Monday?
Or second, second Monday, it could be the eighth. That's, it can be done, but what we end up having a lot of times is, I don't, some of the bills, I don't even get by the eighth and we have to have a few days in order to have them back ready to send out.
So going back, why you moved from the third to the second week?
Yeah, actually, the reason we did is because Seth was unable to attend on the third, that's the reason we went to the second. We would like to go back to the third if that's conducive or pre-scheduled, quite honestly, because just for paying bills, for getting financials, it allows sufficient time. It's, it's asking an awful lot of, of the building secretaries when it's on the eighth, because I'm actually, actually starting to write checks before the end of the month. Are you wanting to go earlier as well?
We could go earlier and I think one of the reasons we thought to was if you have kids that are in activities, then they could, you could be at those activities, we could be at those activities, bill doesn't have to come here early, those kinds of things.
It's a little bit tougher for Monty.
Yeah, mine was Monty.
I was fine with five, I think it was, we did move back to six.
Right.
To help with Seth's schedule.
Yeah, so what we do with city council, we do five fifteen. That way your five o'clock employees can make it, see you.
Well, I'm, I've got to run to define, so you don't want me coming here right after work, I know it smells real bad. I need to go home, shower and come back, so. Five's kept me real close. I could make it, though. I mean, if that's, that works for everybody, I could do it. Five thirty would be better.
What about five fifteen, five thirty?
Five thirty would be good. But, not a big deal.
The third Monday better for everybody?
That works for me.
That's fine. By the way, thank you.
Oh, yeah.
What do you say, the five fifteen or five thirty?
It would work. Why don't I try five fifteen and if, if I can make it at five, we could start, we can left it forward if that works for you.
You get a speeding ticket, we'll move back five thirty.
I think the fourth thing is just plenty of time when, you know.
First time in twenty years.
This table.
How about you, Greg?
Verbal worries.
You're marrying up with what I'm used to.
Thank you, Officer White.
Okay, how about a motion?
I move that it's on the third Monday of the month at five fifteen.
Second.
Second. Okay, all in favor of that?
Aye.
Okay. Maybe memberships and assignments, how do you do that?
I mean, do that too, Jim. So I think we revert to the four of you that have been on, I, I do think there are some committees there that meet on a regular basis and others that are there if needed, so I don't know if you guys want to talk to that.
Usually there are three on the finance committee, correct Al? Three on the salary.
You just can't have more than three, so.
Yeah.
Sometimes there are two, some of the county conference board, Monty, is that's a one thing?
Policy committee, do we even do that? Because we're doing that as a board.
Yes.
You know, we're going through, we still need one?
You're supposed to have one that you can have, or you can say rotating.
Okay. So if we just say.
You call it rotating.
So if we rotate, then we're still covered with different people taking, okay, so we really don't need anybody for that one?
Typically on the, if you don't mind, I jumped in, typically on the negotiate the salary, negotiating salary and bargaining, in the past, it's always been for president, vice president, and then somebody else. I would tell you, there's only one person that has institutional knowledge, and that's Monty.
Easy with that.
But, I mean, he has the institutional knowledge of the contract going past, so that's.
That would make, so it would be the president, vice president and Monty.
That would typically what we've done in the past. And the finance committee, it's usually the president, the vice president and then another person.
Okay. Delegate Assembly is one person, they just attend the IASB convention every year. The sick leave thing.
Only meets if needed.
Only meets if needed.
But you have to have somebody on it.
Okay, but need somebody. District Study Committee, that's, really haven't done anything with that in the past.
Don't look.
No, but I'm just, I'm confirming that, that we usually have one.
It's, it's been a little bit confusing exactly what it is, it's, I think it's, was that the CYAC?
Yeah, it was CYAC.
And which, it's important, but I don't know, we might want to look at that. Do we have, are any of these in policy that we have to have these committees?
Why did, CYAC, you have to have a CYAC committee? Why didn't you change it to District Study Committee?
I'm not sure.
Remember the exact, it kind of happened a few years ago and I don't remember.
I used to be on it years ago and it was called CYAC.
And it, and it involves more than just the board, it's like a, many in the community, it's a big.
And there used to be two of us on that and they used to be active.
I think we want to look at that.
And then buildings and grounds, that doesn't really amount to much either.
Well.
Oh, but yes, well.
That's going to be a fairly active.
Yes.
I think that that committee is probably going to be working with Patrick.
Yeah, I would think so too.
Pretty closely, and then reporting back to us with Patrick's, I really think, so it's going to be important.
And the county conference board, I don't.
That's me.
That's you, okay, you're going to stay on that one.
Good.
So that was kind of the description and.
And how many on buildings and grounds?
Um.
Probably one, two.
Yeah, I'd say two.
I would tell you that's.
If you're going to be that active with that much.
Yeah, the finance, and then again, the negotiating is pretty active for a couple of months, okay? The finance committee is three or four meetings, it can be more than that, but it's typically three meetings a year. And then the, probably the three most active on this, probably the bill, well, this coming year, it'd be the buildings and ground, the finance and the salary and bargaining, probably the three most active.
Can I ask Brian why we, why we have two committees, like why don't we have a finance committee that just serves on salary and bargaining?
I would answer that, that's where they've done it. That's not.
You need to say three people by the way.
Yeah, my, I thought that too. I was like, why, why the committee invite?
And doesn't the finance committee rotate?
No.
It does.
Well, that's just on the bill, or that's just the bill with bills.
Okay.
And that is, that is.
You still need a finance committee. We started, we started having the finance committee be a lot more active probably three or four years ago and just, because we started using that comprehensive financial projection model and it was just a lot easier to have them see it ahead of time before the board, so they were able to help with some of the.
It seems like it might make sense to have the finance committee and the salary and bargaining committee, be two separate committees but made up of the same people, because they're the ones that really need to, and the, and the salary and bargaining committee is only active, as Brian says, only for a couple of months, that's so.
They are kind of intertwined.
Well, that'd be.
Maybe got that figured out.
That's pretty much figured out.
So Jim.
Yeah, I mean, it seems like it makes sense.
I just thought that's components, because I thought we did.
Monty, Al and Jim on both of those.
That's just the bills.
Okay, so we'll keep that.
Yeah, yeah, no, yeah, that has nothing to do with it, yeah, that has nothing to do with the committee members.
No, I didn't, I was too much.
So Catherine, A is Jim, Al and Monty. B is Jim, Al and Monty.
I don't have, I don't have A, B, C, D in Iowa.
Yeah, it's Jim, Al and Monty.
Jim, Al.
B is Jim, Al, Monty.
Can we say C is just rotating? Can we just say rotating, Brian?
Yeah.
Okay, so rotating. Delegate Assembly was.
No, I, I was just telling, I was just explaining what it is.
But weren't you the person last year?
Yes.
You don't want to do it this year?
Well, actually, I'd like to. I'm delegates on, on other things, I've got quite a bit of experience.
Okay.
Unless somebody else would like to be.
No, I.
You're going.
I was just explaining.
Yeah, you just go one and we get one vote and, yep.
And that's just at the convention.
I think it has to be the day before.
That's the day before the convention.
Yeah.
You also want an alternate, in case the person can't, like this year.
Like this year, yeah.
Okay, so Joe, and then who's alternate?
It's somebody that needs to be able to go two days to convention instead of one, so it's, it's a good, it's a good thing to be there for.
I would, sure.
Okay, we'll do Jade, alternate. So Brian, do we have to put anything for secret bank or can we just say needs if needed or rotating?
I think you have to have somebody.
Yeah, we just, we just put three people in there.
If you'd ever meet, and it was Al, I'll go on it, because you're saying.
Okay, who's?
Middle of the week.
I'll go on it.
Do we need three for it?
I think two would be enough, but you, but two, whatever, whatever.
You and I.
Yeah, we got it.
Greg and Joni, okay?
Oh, it's going to.
May never be.
Go big this year.
Oh, you watch.
It's always one of those things, but when it does, one of, and it's an extremely confidential committee, it's one that doesn't.
That's the CYAC one.
Yeah.
So the district study committee, yeah, two, two on that probably, I'd like to have. The CYAC, which we'll get up and running again. So it is a school improvement advisory council, so every district has to have one and you have parents involved and board members involved, teachers involved, students involved, to help with your, your school improvement goals. Needs probably once or twice a year.
It's got, it's got a minimum of. I bet Jade would like it, wouldn't you?
Yeah.
Jade? Okay. Jade, and who else?
I can't.
Joni? Buildings and grounds.
Now, did you say there's a limit on how many on that one?
No. Well, you could only have three.
Right, because it'd be a quorum.
Committee or you'd have a quorum.
Right.
But I would say at least three, like Greg said, then at least one of the three could be there at our conversation.
And I think it might be good to have a gentleman on the buildings and grounds this year. It seems like it might make sense.
Get the precedent on our.
I want to be interested. Buildings and grounds, that's what I'm doing.
Really?
I would like two if nobody else wants to. But either way.
If somebody else wanted.
Well, you wouldn't be able to, because.
This would be, this is different, but in our facilities, Seth's still here, but this would be.
If we only had two, you probably could, I don't know, could she be in the same room, in the same decision? I don't know, that's a good question for, because you'd have three board members and.
If Jade wanted.
If you had four, if you had three others plus her.
If she ran, I could be as a parent, can we still have three on the committee?
But the commit, yeah.
Well, I'd like to be on it unless somebody else really wants to be on it.
We have Jade on all the time with.
But we can have Jade on if we're three.
Out of quorum, because we have three towns people there that are voting and that others people are not voting.
I think so.
And then the county conference board is Monty.
Pretty sure.
It's okay, I'm like saying, maybe he clears it and I just go along for the ride.
Still under that. They can allow up to two board members, so.
The county conference board.
That's a good question. I'll check it out.
I just want to learn the ropes.
It's a good hangover.
I think I got them.
Very good. And you're probably. Would anybody like to vote on a journey?
Wait, we gotta, we gotta.
Sorry, sorry now, but sorry, that's my fault, I told them.
I'll vote.
Yeah, they.
Yes. Can we vote on all?
Yeah, it's all together.
Yep.
Okay, so then, do we need to, do we need to read them out loud, just, or can we just vote?
We can just vote.
I move that we have committee members, as she's got written down.
You're going to list them all?
As Catherine has written down for us.
We have, we have it three times, so we'll make sure that we got them right.
Second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, how about a journey?
So moved.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.